All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming to this very early morning session on the economic geography of innovation. And we'll be discussing with a wonderful roster of presenters today about the data methodological challenges of trying to identify and analyze the spatial distribution of technology, innovation, and as well technological diffusion. So first of all, introductions, I'm Enrico Banino, I'm an associate professor in economics at the University of Sheffield, and I'm as well wearing a second hat as a fellow of the ONS for a while, and I'll be your chair for today, and I'll be as well presenting later on something. All right, so we start with no harder argue with the first presentation by Laura Haddock and Beck Chandler or Beck King previously, and presenting about exactly transforming R&amp;D statistics in the UK. The floor is yours.
Fabulous. Thanks, Enrico.
Sorry, just one more thing, I forgot about the format of the session, so we'll have 15 minutes presentations, followed by a five minutes Q and A after each presentation. So if you have any burning question, please feel free to ask at the end of the presentation, and we'll open the discussion in the last 10 minutes over all about this session. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Rebecca Chandler, and this is Laura, and today we'll be presenting to you on the Business Enterprise Research Development Statistics, and we work at the Office for National Statistics, and for the last 18 months, we've been looking to transform how we measure R&amp;D in businesses. So the quick outline of the session today, well, I'll just briefly touch on the goals and ambitions of transforming R&amp;D, then I'll talk through the transformation methods, and the challenges we had to our previous methods, and what we've done to address them. And then Laura will spend the majority of the session running through what impact this has statistics we produced in February. And as Enrico said, we'll take questions at the end of that before we move on to the next speaker. So this just outlines the mission statement of why we look to transform our research development statistics. Our goal was to make sure UK R&amp;D statistics internationally recognized of high quality and can respond to user needs. There's lots of different drivers outlined here that helped us, reasons we wanted to do this transformation, as well as some key objectives about looking at our granularity that is important to our users and be able to be flexible for future. So I'm going to talk through some of those estimates, how they were previously created, and how they are now currently done. Underpinning our transformation has been large scale changes to our sample design. Previously, we sampled from a universe of businesses of known performers of R&amp;D using feeder surveys, where our large contributors only receive more detailed questions and information with sample size from 4,000 businesses. This led to lots of challenges for us and helped start us on our transformation journey. Because of the sampling from a universe, as expectations of where R&amp;D is done changed, we found that our sample was getting outdated quickly. So for instance, as different industries or different regions started doing R&amp;D, we were looking at not being able to catch those properly, leading to undercoverage in our survey design. Such a small number of our contributors received those more detailed questionnaires, meaning we had difficulty in understanding more granular information to do with the R&amp;D, such as where it's performed, as well as limited quality of how we stratify and produce that more granular information, particularly interested at the moment for some of our policy questions. The new sample design that we've worked on over the last 18 months, and that underpins our statistics published in February, looked to use the whole of the interdepartmental business register to make sure we dealt with some of the undercoverage and biases seen in our estimates. And we also used administrative data, HMRC tax credit information to help supplement that, to make sure we could capture the big performers of R&amp;D within our sample. We also looked to include a much higher proportion of our sample, so about a quarter of it, to receive our long forms, our more detailed questionnaires, to make sure we could publish more granular information of R&amp;D, which Laura will talk through later, as well as substantially increase our sample size from 40,000 businesses. This will now reduce to 20,000 this year, because based on our new responses and the analysis we've done, we can optimize to still hit the level of granularity with a slightly smaller sample, but still substantially larger than we previously had. So I touched on there that we use administrative data to help inform our sample. As with most things with administrative data, on the surface, some might question, well, why wouldn't you look to use that administrative data in place of the survey, given the limitations we found? As we dug deeper, there were lots of different reasons and differences found between those sources that meant it wasn't appropriate to use as a like-for-like supplementation. So for instance, there's lots of conceptual reasons listed there of why that's not appropriate. Well, that doesn't mean we couldn't find value in that administrative data source, as well as supplementing our survey, and we also use it to quality assure and target how we look to improve and analyze that sample, to make sure there were robust estimates produced. One of the big challenges, being able to get back to the granularity, was a large scale increase to our sample size. As an Office for National Statistics, we have to be really conscious of respondent burden and making sure that's delivering value for money. To make sure we could manage that, there were some steps that are taken outlined here to help support that. So we moved from paper questionnaires to electronic, to allow us to be flexible by design, reduce respondent burden by allowing us to introduce at-source validation checks, prompts for responding businesses to answer some of the more detailed questions on the R&amp;D, which can be complex in nature. We also wanted to improve the guidance, so some key user feedback we received was how well do we capture R&amp;D done in less R&amp;D intensive industries, such as social sciences and humanities? So we look to improve that guidance around those to make sure respondents could give us high-quality responses to the questions, and we made sure those were tested and assured through lots of different assurance groups, as well as working with businesses to make sure our guidance could be understood. And then finally, large-scale changes to our sample meant that our follow-up methods have to be changed as well. So we've just changed our methods to more standard estimation and imputation methods to allow us to deal with a large increase to our sample, to produce the statistics in a timely way. So that's a very brief introduction to the background of what we used to do and what we do now. So I'll hand over to Laura to talk through what that means for the statistics themselves.
Thanks, Beck. So I'm going to take a bit of a step back and just go back to that question that we had initially, that we were suspected that the Business Enterprise Research and Development Survey was underestimating for research and development carried out by businesses, particularly for small businesses and for those less research-intensive industries. So firstly, to that question of whether the BIRD survey was underestimating, so this chart shows you the R&amp;D qualifying expenditure for tax credits, so that's the HMRC data in the blue line, and our BIRD data before we did any transformation in the orange line. Now, we know that there are conceptual differences between the two, and Beck explained why we wouldn't expect the two to be ever identical, but the conceptual differences don't account for such a big difference. So we were fairly confident that there was underestimation. We addressed that through a two-stage approach. The first stage was a methodological uplift, where we couldn't resample for certain years. So for the data from 2014 to 2021, we applied this methodological uplift, and we were fairly confident that that uplift approach had addressed a lot of the underestimation from our survey. But when we did have the opportunity to redesign our sample, we did that, and that's the data in 2022, which seems to confirm that the uplift approach was pretty appropriate, given that it's continued the upward trajectory of BIRD to just over 50 billion in 2022. If we look at the second part of the question, were we underestimating particularly for small businesses? Well, before our transformation, you can see that large businesses accounted for about 75% of all research and development carried out by businesses. Our interim uplift approach actually suggested that that was closer to a 50-50 split between large businesses and small businesses. And then when we implemented our new sampling design, that's where we began to get an idea that maybe our uplift approach wasn't always the best, and most appropriate way to do things. So although our uplift approach was brilliant for some breakdowns, for others, particularly this breakdown by company size, it was perhaps performing less well. So under our new sampling approach, you can see that, yes, small businesses were doing more R&amp;D than we thought that they were doing previously. So that proportion has increased from 25% of R&amp;D done by small businesses to now 40%. We were underestimating, but not by as much as the uplift approach suggested. And the third part of the question, whether we were underestimating for research and development carried out by the less research-intensive industries. Now, that's a bit tricky to tell. Now, our new sampling approach does actually account for more businesses from those less research-intensive industries. However, when we went out to them, a lot of them still said that they don't carry out research and development. So it's still the case that research and development by businesses is highly concentrated in certain product groups and in certain industries. The top five product groups account for nearly 60% of all research and development, and the top five industries account for 55% of all research and development by businesses. Now, what else have we learned from our statistics? Well, because of the way we've changed our sample design, and because we now send out that long-form questionnaire, the more detailed questionnaire to more businesses, we have a better understanding of what is going on and where research and development is being carried out. So this shows you research and development by ITL1 region for businesses, and the majority of that is carried out in the Greater South East, so that's London, the southeast and the east of England, which account for 56.7% of all research and development. This largely reflects what we already know about research and development hubs in the UK. The smallest expenditure by region is carried out in the North East, which accounts for just 1.5% of all business research and development. But these ITL1 breakdowns aren't particularly new to BIRD, we used to publish them under our old methodology. Now, recently, for the first time, we've published on the ONS website a breakdown of research and development by ITL2 region. Again, here you can see the top 10 ITL2 regions for research and development. These won't necessarily be too surprising if you know the R&amp;D landscape in the UK. The top five regions are all located in that Greater South East area that we talked about earlier, and East Anglia in London West, and Berkshire, Buckinghamshire, and Oxfordshire, all individually carry out more research and development than nine of the ITL1 regions. And collectively, the top 10 regions account for more than 60% of all research and development, and the bottom 10 regions account for less than 5% of all research and development. We're also, as part of the next stage in our transformation, exploring, but I don't want to give any guarantees here, we're exploring whether we can do further breakdowns, looking to give a breakdown of research and development by businesses at the ITL3 regional level. But if we want to have a look at what this means overall for the UK, you can see that under our old methodology, and now under our new methodology, the UK is actually more research-intensive than it previously was. However, it hasn't shifted us much in the international picture. And this chart is one of the ones that was often, there are a lot of comparisons made with this chart when we first discovered the problems with our BIRD survey. If you have a look here, the Great Britain statistics are quite an outlier in the chart. So we've looked at redesigning, well, recreating this chart with the data we currently have available. And so that's the chart that you can now see on the right-hand side. It looks slightly different to the one on the left-hand side, because we've had some revisions to the data, but it's for the same year. So the first set of bars shows under our old sample, where we were still an outlier. But then the second set of bars in this new chart show that, under our uplift approach, it brings the qualifying share of research and development of BIRD to around 90%, which is roughly in line with other companies. Well, it's still on the high side, but it's not out of line with what you can see in the chart on the left-hand side. So internationally, we are more comparable now. And that trend continues into 2020, 2021, and we hope it continues with our data in 2022, once the statistics are available. Finally, I want to tell you a bit about what these changes mean for the onward impacts to other statistics that rely on our business research and development statistics. So our colleagues in national accounts have been working very hard to see what this impact could be, and at the moment, we have an indicative idea of where this is going. I do want to note that the bars in this chart do relate to different years, but it does give you an idea of where the shifts are and how big the shifts could be. So looking at BIRD, when we initially introduced our uplift approach, that showed that BIRD increased by 64%. Now, BIRD is just one element of research and development in gross fixed capital formation, so we would expect there to be a smaller increase in GFCF when you look at how BIRD impacted, and that is true. You can see here that it actually only shows an increase in GFCF of around 22%. Now, the final part of this chart is the GDP element. That is something that we haven't yet carried out. We're still doing the work to see how much impact there will be on GDP, and we expect that to be in our Blue Book 2025. But given how small an element BIRD is of GDP, we would expect that increase, if it's an increase, to be a lot smaller. So that is what I was going to tell you about our statistics, and I'm going to hand back to Beck now.
Just check my mic is all. It is perfect. So this is just to summarize some of the changes that we've made to our Business Enterprise Research Development Statistics in the last 18 months to two-year project. As you can see, in order for us to achieve that level of granularity that Laura's talked through us, we've had to make lots of large-scale changes across lots of different elements of the collection. I think sometimes it's easy to consider, it's quite simplistic to make those improvements, but as you can see, we've had to make lots of changes across the whole statistical production cycle to enable us to have that confidence in the data we're producing, and as Laura said, to continue understanding that work of how we do that in the future. That's not the end of our journey, though. As Laura alluded to there, we are kind of exploring some other things around ITL Level 3, as well as looking at other different types of improvements we could make in R&amp;D. Some of the other parts that we're looking at is our government estimates as well of R&amp;D, which we won't discuss in detail at this session. Also looking to rationalize some of the surveys that we do, exploring how we exploit the benefits of moving to electronic collection for the surveys. And as Laura said, one of the big challenges over the next year will be understanding how we incorporate that into our GDP and our annual blue books for next year. Through a large-scale transformation like this, sustainability is really important. As part of a statistical organization, we have to work really hard to make sure that these statistics can be fit for the future, as well as making sure we can remain relevant for our users, so we can work with OSR recently to help get that assurance around what we've been doing to date. So that's all we're going to talk through. That's a whistle-stop tour of the R&amp;D. So as Enrico said, we're happy to take some questions for a couple of minutes before we move on to the next presenter.
Much. Do we have any questions from the audience?
Hi, I'm Vicky. I'm from the ONS. Thank you. It looks really good, and it's really great to see all of the changes that got there. I was just interested to see, after the conversations we had yesterday about how revisions were received, this is obviously quite a big revision. How has this been received by some of these stakeholders and people who are making use of these stats?
So I think, I know that there's some people at this conference who have been highly involved in our stakeholder comms on this from the very beginning. And certainly, when we made the initial announcement, we did try to do a lot of things like signaling that this change was coming, signaling as much as we could within the code of practice for statistics, that how big the scale of change would be. But that didn't mean we got it entirely right when we were doing our comms. Certainly, some people highlighted areas where we could have made improvements in the original announcement of the change, which has happened in 2022. But when we went out with our improved statistics and improved sample design this year, I think we had a much better reception. We had handled it very well, and it did help that our new sample confirmed the uplift approach that we'd have previously applied.
Hi, I'm Arjun with ESCO. I wanted to ask, could you elaborate a bit further on the allocation of R&amp;D to locations? If I'm a large firm with headquarters in London, but I have an R&amp;D lab in Aberdeen, I have an R&amp;D lab somewhere in Cambridgeshire, is that primarily done through surveys, or could you perhaps explain a bit further how that allocation of R&amp;D budget system?
Yeah, great question. So when we talked about our long forms or our more detailed questionnaire, so one of the limitations of our previous sample was also we only had around 4,000 businesses, of which only a small proportion of those asked more detailed questions around R&amp;D, one of them being actually the location of it. So we identified the importance of actually making sure we capture as much information from businesses directly as possible about the location of the R&amp;D that is carried out. So for instance, all businesses over 250 employment size, and our big performers identified through R&amp;D tax credit information that helps supplement our sample, are given the more detailed questionnaire. It's been really, obviously, really important for us to make sure we can get that granularity and understand where R&amp;D is being performed, to help us understand the landscape of R&amp;D better. Obviously, there's a balancing act between our respondent burden. So obviously, for all of you aware of R&amp;D, it's quite a challenging concept, to say the least, as well as quite complex questions that need to be captured to be able to record that appropriately. But also, on balance, we've increased the number of businesses that received our long form. But that's why some of the transformation underpinning our collection was so important, to make sure businesses felt supported and able to respond to those questions, to give us that key information about where R&amp;D is captured.
Yeah, thank you. This is Youssef from Oman National Statistics Centre. Yes, we conduct the survey for R&amp;D. This is an annual survey. What I heard now, maybe that's, there is a little bit changed now for the, what we call it, B E R D. Maybe this, I want to know exactly where there'd be change. Is it in the questionnaire itself, or maybe the methodology of the question, which we have to include it in the questionnaire? This is when also, we publish the result by country basis, not by region basis. What about if there is overlapping business between different regions? How you can get it exactly, this is expenditure for this region, not for this, or just you send a questionnaire for, let's say, if this company has branched out of the capital city, you send them to questionnaire? Thank you.
So in terms of the first part of that question, which I think was about where the biggest shift came in our BIRD transformation, so it was very much a case that our sampling methodology wasn't picking up the right businesses. We were previously using a filter survey approach, so we were relying on other surveys to tell us which businesses were carrying out research and development. And if you weren't sampled for those surveys, you stood no chance of ever receiving our business research and development survey. So it was pretty much a methodological problem that we were solving with the transformation initially. So that's where the biggest change came. And when you're talking about how we can account for the locations, the regionality, and making sure that you've got R&amp;D reported in the right locations, this is actually a challenge that we do come across. Although we publish statistics for the UK, the BIRD survey that we've been talking about is actually a GB survey, and there is a similar survey carried out in Northern Ireland, which we then bring together to create the UK statistics. We find that there are businesses in the UK who receive our long forms, and therefore have to tell us where they're carrying out R&amp;D by postcode, who carry out research and development in Northern Ireland. So the statistics that you get from the Northern Ireland survey wouldn't necessarily be capturing that research and development, because it's carried out by a GB business and an NI business. But our statistics bring that together so that you see where the research and development is carried out. That's what the survey reflects. Hopefully, that's answered the question.
Very much. If you have more questions, keep them for the discussion later. So thank you very much, Laura. I'm back. We can move to the next speaker, who is Tyler Ricard, Lead Analyst on Innovation Policy from DSET.
Yes, thank you. So today, I'm going to be talking about work to identify R&amp;I organizations and understand their collaboration patterns. To start with, a question, what do these six organizations have in common? We have a fire and rescue service, a mosque, an area of outstanding natural beauty, a football team, an airport, and local government. And the answer is that they are all collaborators on UKRI-funded research projects. So if you don't know, you can access a full dataset of all of the, I'm going to say all, but obviously that comes with caveats, not quite everything, all of the research that is funded by UKRI. It's a very useful dataset for analyzing. It's good for transparency. Here is a screenshot showing for Niddedale area of outstanding natural beauty that is associated with five different research projects as a collaborator. Why does this matter? There's a large amount of evidence that the nature of collaboration impacts the outcomes of that collaboration. So in academic research, it's well documented that international collaborations have a different impact than national collaborations. And then there's also, there's evidence on collaborations between industry and academia, or just within academia. And similarly, if you look at business performance, there's evidence that the nature of who the business is collaborating with, be it a university, be it another firm, will affect the output or the outcomes of that research. And if you subscribe to kind of more theoretical underpinnings of innovation, stuff like the national innovation system, or you get this idea that there are three main actors within innovation, there are businesses, there are universities, and then there's government. Triple helix theory is another take on this, but it's the same idea of there are three groups, and it's the interactions between these groups that contain that result in innovation. But the majority of studies don't actually look at the government part. They only look at university and industry collaboration, or within universities, between universities, between industry. And there's an interesting critique of this that points out that actually, the operating model and the constraints and challenges that public research institutes face are very different from university institutes, and we should stop lumping them together in research, as often happens. Not for bad reasons, it's often that there's just not as much data in the public research institutes. They get thrown in with universities, but that obscures quite a lot of what is happening underneath. So what we're trying to do is transform the gateway to research dataset. I'm going to talk in this presentation about our work to transform the organization-level data, but we have other projects that I'll allude to at the end. This top table shows what the data looks like in gateway to research on organizations. It's really quite basic. You get the name of the organization, and if you're lucky, you get a postcode. You then also have the projects that they're on sometimes, but quite a lot of organizations only appear on one or two projects. So the three big issues with this organization-level data is that you can have multiple entries per entity, as I've shown here. So these are real examples from the dataset. The first two rows both correspond to the National Physical Laboratory, which is a public sector research establishment located in South London. But you even have it if the organization has the same name. So there's, I think, like six, University of Oxford. There's no difference in the name, but it appears as multiple entries due to issues with the, like historically, of merging the data systems from the research councils and Innovate UK. That's easy to fix, right? If it has the same name. It's harder to fix when the names are slightly different, when acronyms are used. For context, NPL Management Limited is like the legal trading name of National Physical Laboratory. The top one actually has an error. It's, the person who's inputted this has written National Physics Laboratory, which is another issue. So you get multiple entries per what I'm calling entity. There's no taxonomy or tagging of, is this a university? Is this a business? Is it a public sector research institute? And again, there's a lack of location data. Sometimes there is a postcode. Sometimes you get like the country in brackets as part of the name of the organization, but generally, a lot of it is missing, the nuanced information about where an organization is located. And so I'll explain how, but we're trying to clean the dataset to have a harmonized system of, actually, these are all one organization that appears by different names, this is the category, and then a bunch of reference IDs to external datasets where that's relevant. The universities, it's things like UKPRNs, the businesses, it's company registration numbers. So there are very advanced ways to do this, which are not suitable for the gateway to research dataset. So in academic, when you do bibliometric research and you look at collaborations between universities, those often, like individual papers get mapped to universities and to particular authors, often by leveraging the network and by seeing, well, okay, this name kind of corresponds to this person who historically has been at this university and collaborated with this other institute quite a lot, is collaborating with them now, it's probably them. and collaborated with this other institute quite a lot, is collaborating with them now, it's probably them. That doesn't work with Get Ready to Research really because we don't have that much information and that many entries. With an academic paper, you have the, the institute, the person's name, sometimes the centre, the like the research centre within that university. We don't have any of that. We often, quite often just have the name. So if you slightly more simple methods, which, you know, nothing new here about cross referencing with other data sets like Companies House or university level data. It's a bit more novel is we've tried to get as many different data sets as we can find out there or publicly available ones that refer to kind of the public sector or third sector organisations. So you've got here, this is like UK-based schools and colleges, public bodies, so like central government departments and their agencies, PSRs, like research council institutes, independent research organisations, the Catpots AgriTech centres, but by all of their names. So it's like a lot of these lists have alternative spellings of their names, which accounts for the issues where they appear under different names in the data set. Landed societies, this company data by People Data Labs, which is the weak link in all of this. Because it's hard to get good freely available international company data. And then a hospital list. So you cross-reference those, you see if you pick up the organisation, that's good when that works. Obviously, this is a UK-focused list and so international, a lot of international organisations get missed. So we use a lot of keyword searches where the keywords make it abundantly clear, like what the organisation is doing, hospital, city council, ombudsman. And you can also extract location data on, you know, if a place name appears within the name of the organisation. We use countries, but we also use like cities and regions, which gets slightly more murky and involves a lot more cleaning. Because obviously lots of cities have the same name in different countries or they're kind, they can be common nouns in, in English. So there are cities in the world called like university. So when you use that data, quickly realise that there's lots of false positive matches. So this is an example of the kind of, I say example because it doesn't list every level two category that we have. But the four high level categories that we are assigning organisations to are either public sector, academia and industry, which is just, the academia industry has been done very much before. But the, what's harder and what we're trying, we've done more effort for is the public sector and third sector. So in all of these examples, there's like the keywords in, in the name, so government of ministry of for the national government agencies, city council, combined authority for like local government agencies, et cetera. So by doing this, we're able to create quite a rich picture of what all these non-university, non-business organisations are collaborating on UK research and innovation projects. These are some of our preliminary results. So we have 62,000 organisations in the data set. Text cleaning and matching leads to about 40,000 matches. And then through keyword search and for even location or function, you get another 10 to 8,000. Worth bearing in mind that obviously a lot of organisations only appear on one or two projects. And so quite a lot of the NAs are those sort of organisations. So we have like the bulk of, you know, the most important organisations, but there's still work to do to, to better identify some of these NAs. So this is the, the kind of taxonomy results of the organisation categories. I can't compare to anything before because it hasn't been, there isn't any good data on that, but with the locations I can compare. So you can do about 8,000 identifiers fallen in the base data set based on like foreign postcodes and the words, the country name appearing. But with our new method, we're able to increase that by about 6,000. Here is just some early results of the kind of, once you've cleaned it, what the, what the outputs are. So you can look at how many projects involve a certain type of collaborator. So this takes all of the projects in the data set. And you see, if you look at all of them, the, about 50% of projects have a private sector collaborator. And then about 40% a university collaborator, I think more similarly, about 40% public sector. These aren't mutually exclusive. A project can have all of these as a collaborator. And this is only collaborative projects. We've excluded projects that just have a single lead organisation. If you distill it to business, you actually see on all collaborative, almost all collaborative projects led by businesses, there is another business on the project. Which very much sort of confirms what we know from the UK Innovation Survey. So that's, that's quite nice. It suggests that this is broadly worked as a, as a cleaning method. So our next step is in the immediate term, we're going to finalise the organisation cleaning. There's a, there's a few final things that we are testing to improve the, the matching rates. We have another, we have a host of Get Ready to Research cleaning projects that will enhance the product data. The people data, again, linking it to OpenAlex, so we know exactly who all of the individuals are. And the outcome data, which includes the publications associated with the research. And in the longer term, we want to expand to the other R and D funders in government. Some of it's publicly available. I've listed publicly available data sets here, but a lot isn't. If you can analyse all of the portfolios together, you can understand where programmes are interacting or overlapping. You can also see what's the sort of the pathway of organisations being involved on, say, one project. Start now, organisations receiving funding maybe from one part of government, but then they go on to receive it from, from another part of government. Like what's the progression from different funding schemes that attempt to, to target different problems in the innovation lifecycle? And we're exploring how we can then reduce the kind of data collection reporting burden on other government departments who are asked by us repeatedly or others for kind of summaries of their data. If we can get all of the project level data ourselves, we can hopefully reduce some of that and apply some consistency to some of the estimates that currently happen across government departments. Yeah, I should somehow go back. Yeah, thank you.
So yeah, we have time for a few questions. The words, I'll take the pre, my privilege as a chair to make a question. So it's very interesting to look, for instance, at public services involved in, in this type of collaborations. Could it be possible to use this in order to identify innovation in public sector? And, and how that could improve for its productivity in a public sector provision?
I think this could be used to understand what parts of the public sector are perhaps more innovative in the sense that if you look at the, the total counts, right, of what parts of government tend to be involved in research and innovation. That, that would be a good proxy perhaps to, to understanding what parts of government are better at. And then be some interesting follow-up work to say, okay, we know this local authority is actually quite involved in the local research innovation system. And you might follow up to then do some more qualitative research to understand why.
Hi, thank you. Very interesting. And I was just wondering, can you use this data maybe to do some cluster analysis? Because you have the postcode and you have like information, different, well, not industries, but maybe like looking to the third sector as well. Is this maybe reliable to do so?
Yeah. We certainly could do that. And there are, we are currently exploring options for the different analysis we're going to do once like we have the final clean research. One of the things that we are considering is that, is that cluster analysis piece here, as well as some stuff about if you can predict what, you know, what technologies are getting funding, what technologies are seeing increased funding a few years ago, how that, what, what that means now. And the, you know, can you basically predict, predict where the next technology is coming from?
When you were doing the, the kind of postcode checking, many of those businesses or organisations might be multi-site. How are you dealing with the headquartering effect in the data?
That's a good question. We cannot directly deal with it so much in this data. Although I will say, it's not, businesses don't always, when they have given their postcode, they don't always give their head office. So generally that isn't too much of a problem when they're giving it. UKRI have access to that more detailed, where does the spend happen? And it's not actually as big of a problem as, as people sometimes think. Generally, yeah, the postcode that is given quite often is where the research is taking place.
Hi, I'm just wondering, like, did you use of freely available data, especially for like linking to sort of like companies data? That I think, like in my department, I think we usually use the number. I'm just wondering, like, for this, I think it's from the slides, is the people labs, something like that. And just wondering, like, what the quality of the data set is like. And I could see the advantage of obviously, like, you could share the data, but what about the data quality?
Yeah, so they produce that data set based on web scraping of LinkedIn business profiles primarily. So, you know, it's not terrible quality, but it's not the most robust. There are obviously private providers out there that do very good data on international companies, international company data like Orbis. But as soon as I use a commercial data set, it will affect like my, my then, what I can share for the final output. So I've tried to, to avoid that. One thing I am going to, I have been exploring is using different countries, national registers of companies. Some of them have providers for free, like France does, individual US states do. That will then bias obviously, I mean, because the, the original data set isn't that great. It's still probably be an improvement, but it will bias the ability to identify the location based on those countries that provide good open data on their companies.
We'll have to keep other burning questions for later on. Okay. And thanks, Tyler. We move to the next presentation by John Cooper, Head of Policy and R and D Policy Analysis at DBT. Sorry, DC, I mix it. Sorry, I didn't want to do that.
It's all good. Thanks. The mic's on. Okay, yeah, this, this hopefully builds on the two presentations we've seen so far. So. Actually, yeah, so I'm going to talk to you about the work that my team has done over the last year or two. And I'm going to provide a little bit of context first and then talk specifically about some cluster mapping we've done. So my team, a team of analysts in, in DSET who look at regional R and D, the university research system and the R and D workforce. So we've got the interesting remit of looking at place-specific R and D policies. And I should say, first of all, this is obviously narrower than innovation, R and D is narrower than innovation. However, I've kind of flicking back and forth between the two a little bit in this presentation. And because we wanted to get that kind of wider understanding, wider than R and D. So it's not exactly the same definitions as some of the, some of the talks so far. So just what motivates our analysis in this area? So we've got a brief overview here of the main policy problem, at least as usually as ministers here, is the fact that we've got a really uneven distribution of R and D expenditure across the UK. So this is UK sub-region level. It's slightly older data than, you know, that is available now at ONS on the chart. But the, the bullet point, I think, gives the most recent gap between the Greater South East and the rest of the UK. So that the estimate now is in 2021 was the UK R and D intensities at 2.9%. But this is 3.3 for the Greater South East versus 2.6 for the rest of the UK. So really the policy problem in the simplest terms is how, how we close the gap. And some people would say like, should we close that gap? Do, is it, is it reasonable to do that? So I've picked out six points that I think are really useful things to keep in mind when you're thinking about place-based R and D. And this is from a systematic review of evaluations of the impacts of R and D on, on regions in the UK. So the first thing is that we've got quite a bit of evidence now, including from Enrico as well. I like the benefits of R and D, like R and D funded projects on, on each region. I think every region has benefited in some way. It's either the outcomes are either R and D expenditure, patents, products, processes, and, and even productivity, employment and profits and turnover. However, I think the big caveat is that these innovation outcomes vary a lot by, by region and they're dependent on absorption capacity. And what I mean by that is really about the, the, the ability to absorb the R and D policies. So human capital, regional capabilities in a wider sense, and also knowledge exchange. We know that the more, we've spoken a lot about collaboration, the more knowledge exchange the, is in a region, the more able they are to, to benefit from the R and D, the public R and D. We also know from evaluations that programmes that include collaboration, so as Tyler has spoken about, universities, firms and, and public sector do better on the outcomes. So I think that's a really clear sphere for policies that they should always be, you know, where possible collaborative between, between sectors. And also there's some indication of greater returns for smaller firms and certain sectors. So that, that kind of warrants more, more looking into and also spillover benefits across sectors and regions. But overall, it's really difficult to be precise on how we should optimise the R and D policy in the UK. So what's happened to that slide? Actually, I can, I can talk about it. Okay, yeah, I'm not sure what's going on there. It looks all right earlier. I think the main, the main thing that I was going to say on that slide was that there's, there's a specific problem in each region of why they're not doing R and D. I think that's what we need to get more analysis and more data on. So we need more precise data for more precise policy. So the previous slide showed that the market failures in general for regions. So it could be that they can't access finance. Or it could be that they can't access the skills or they haven't got the infrastructure. So there's different problems for each region. So the main project I'm going to talk about now is how we were trying to use data to get a better, more granular understanding. So we, we did, we've done the first DC interactive map of clusters of the UK. And we've called them innovation clusters. So this is where we've gone wider than R and D because of all of the issues with data and especially at postcode level. We've used quite an experimental method. So the reason we care about clusters is because there is quite a lot of evidence of clusters doing better on economic outcomes. So there's a potential reverse causality here, but certainly the clusters have done better since 2009. And it says the productivity or areas that have clusters. And they're generally seen as important in a policy, in a policy context. And it's also true that there are some very good results of very successful clusters that have been able to attract global talent and investment and then market their services and products globally. So then there's a policy demand to get to, to grow clusters. So in February 2024, we've launched the interactive map and I'll have a link at the end to, to R and D clusters. But we couldn't use the data that we've spoken about before to do a really granular analysis. So the ONS data and even go into research because we wanted to go really wide on the coverage and also look at some sectors that maybe were using R and D and technology, even if they weren't producing it themselves. So this map actually shows all of the clusters that we identified in the bottom-up process across the UK. There's over 3,000 here. And we'll go into a bit more detail about how, how we did it now. So the first thing we did was appoint a really good consortium. So the data city you might be aware of have created real-time industry classifications to build on the standard indications to try to get some of the emerging technologies. So we appointed them alongside Cambridge Econometrics and the Innovation Caucus. So we had a lot of expertise in different, different areas. And the, and the main thing about this project was it was bottom up. So we, there's lots of people who think, who maybe have maps clusters or can identify where the clusters are. Well, you could use UKRI data and identify them. But this was taking sort of a blank page and trying to, to, to find all the innovation clusters in the UK. As well as the real-time industry classification data, we linked the data with business data. So the interdepartmental business register, R and D funding data in Innovate UK and UKRI, and also venture capital data. So we were really trying to get the best available data all on one interactive tool. And there's a screenshot there. I don't, I don't know, I don't know what's happened to this. It really was fine on my phone. But it's okay because I can talk about it. So I think, I think the main thing is how do you define a cluster? So we, we looked at sector clusters. So we looked at sector clusters. So if they're engaged in related activity, if they're spatially co-located. And then a slightly weaker rule that we had was whether they're collaborating within the cluster. And I think this is not, wasn't a prerequisite because clusters of firms could be there to share the same infrastructure or to share the same talent pool. They might be competitors, they might not necessarily be collaborating, but we wanted to know whether they were. And I think this drew up some really interesting findings about how far the collaborations were going, sort of 150 miles, you know, up and down the country and clusters collaborating with each other. So it was an interesting kind of add on, but in terms of the map I showed with 3000 clusters, that was just spatially located and in the same related activity. And yeah, so this is really what some of the some of the data you can pull off the tool. So as well as sort of the visual, the visualization, we've got new data on here. So I think you probably can't can't read it that well, but some of the things you you click on a cluster and you can look at the number of companies, the number of company locations. So because we've used IDVR, we have got some non-head office locations, although it is a caveat like with the previous work that a lot of the a lot of the postcodes will be head offices. We've also got an estimated turnover in employee count, which is less reliable because we've had to split it across sites. And and it's based on, you know, the the best data we can get on, which is not, you know, we've rounded them up and down as a result. You can also find a filter on there, which is the percentage of the the sectors firms across the UK that are found in this cluster. So up there in telecommunications, it's just what is 1% of all of the telecommunications firms are found in that cluster. So you can put a filter on and really see which are the most kind of important quote unquote clusters. And this is important because we get a common policy question of what are the most promising clusters? And what are the ones that we should support? And I think, you know, if I knew that, then I could become really rich. So I think it's a really hard question. But the probably the best way that I can tell somebody of what are the most important clusters is maybe to say, well, if they're holding quite a large share of their their sector, let's say it was AI. If they've got quite a large share of their all the AI firms, then then it is an important cluster. And this sort of brings together a little bit of the previous presentation as well. I've got on the left hand side a heat map that my team did of UKRI funding data alongside some, but not all of the public funded R and D infrastructure. And when I did put a filter on, on the right, on our new mapping tool, I put a filter at 5%. So all of these clusters hold 5% of the firms in their own sector. So the the sector list is up here on the right, but you know, some of these are quite specific. So, you know, clean tech, gaming, energy management. So it's it's quite a specific sector level that real time industry classifications. And I think when you put that filter on for that, they're holding over 5%. Because it's not too dissimilar to who UKRI are funding. And that's not necessarily say that that the government or UKRI is getting it right and says who they're funding. Because when I showed you the previous map, there were obviously way more clusters. And I think there's a question of what we do for each cluster. But this does show that, yeah, it's mainly around the core cities. And, yeah, it's not, it's not too far off. But I would say that there's a lot of more deeper analysis that needs to be done to sort of scrutinize. Even even though these maps look fairly similar, if you if you dig down deeper, then you will find some some new insights on the map on the right. And now just want to talk about some next steps in policy, place based policy. So we've got some two other projects with the OECD, which again is kind of new insights that we haven't had before. What one is estimating the leverage of private R and D from public R and D at a regional level. So this is quite a complicated design over and it's using data over 20 years. And it's trying to look at, again, important question for ministers quite often is, you know, will we get better value for money in the Southeast versus outside? And it's looking at that question. And also another more more qualitative piece with the OECD where we're looking at the local impacts of public funded R and D organizations, which complements the the work that Tyler was talking about. And we also plan to update the cluster map annually and add data to it. So I think one of the one of the things that'd be great to try to get in, probably working with DFE is some sort of skills data. Because I think quite often, you know, that could be a quite a big barrier for clusters growing is that their ability to get, you know, human capital or competence in a in a wider sense of the skills they need to do innovation and R and D. And we're also using, you know, using this more granular evidence that we're getting to appraise policies in in the future. And also working with lots of other departments about how we grow clusters. So that the issues in some of these clusters might not be about the R and D policies. It might be about the infrastructure or the planning or regulation, wider regulation. And just not for you to sort of read everything on the slide, but just to say, there are quite a lot of place based initiatives. And we're doing evaluations of all of these or the all the relevant department or or UKIR. So this will give us the evidence of specifically what works at a program level. And then there's a bigger question of sort of what we do to build these R and D clusters overall. And I think I've got sort of couple of sort of couple of minutes early. So that this is the, these are the links for you to explore the the map yourself and the and the accompanying report that goes into methodology. But just anticipating a question that might get in it is how we did the clustering. So I think it was on the slide that that went wrong earlier. So HDB scan was the method we used. And there are lots of different methods for clustering, but this had two main advantages. One was that it doesn't partition the data, so it doesn't force every firm into a cluster, which I think is quite important. And so if you want the real, if you want the real functional geography, which is what we're aiming for. You don't really want to to force firms into a cluster. And the other is that it allowed different densities between clusters. So for some sectors where they're more spread out by nature, maybe, you know, agri tech or clean tech. And for some regions who've just got fewer firms, then we allowed a less density. So the density depends on the type of sector it is. So that meant that we weren't just picking up clusters that are in urban, you know, city centers and or cities. Which I think was a benefit of this of this method. And also, it's probably obvious when I put it up there, but the the clusters don't match with the statistical geographies that we've had to use before. So the bar chart I had at the start was subregional level ITO two, which is pretty good and certainly tells you more than ITO one. But then the cluster map had things like the digital creative industries spanning, the cluster was spanning Merseyside, Greater Manchester, Cheshire. So these are like, you know, three ITO two areas and it was, it was, it was creating a different boundary across the three. So I think that's, this is really important for policy design to not to not sort of, yeah, assume that the system is the the statistical geography. So I'll stop there and yeah, any questions?
It's actually about motivating back to the beginning of the 3.3% R and D intensity in the Greater South East versus the 2.6% intensity in R and D intensity in the rest of the country. That's not that big a difference. And if you look at the high, like the computer coding and tech industry disparity of how intensive the Greater South East is in tech versus the rest of the country. It's much wider than the R and D intensity, actually. I I would contextualize that and say actually R and D is pretty evenly spread out in the country for an economic phenomenon that you'd expect to be concentrated. And actually, it is a success already that policy has kept R and D going so well outside the Greater South East. A large part probably because manufacturing has been driven out of London. And actually, maybe we should be thinking about why manufacturing isn't as strong in the city that we have in the country that is the most productive.
Yeah, that's a really good point. I thought I would like to do more comparisons of, you know, R and D density versus kind of wider innovation density or tech, oh, yeah, tech. We did actually do some like Gini coefficient analysis a few years ago on the UK versus at the at the ITO two subregion level versus like France, Germany. And that we did, and the UK was a bit more concentrated. However, that would be different now with the with the ONS updates, we'd have to look at it again. But you might be right that it's not not such a huge difference. I think when you look at the expenditure rather than the intensity, it looks much more stark. And that's quite often used actually. So I think Laura said that, you know, it's 56% or something of of the R and D is in the Southeast. But yeah, I think it's a valid question of like, is it how is this a problem, how much of a problem it is? But there were also kind of examples, I mean, like Manchester that we're in. I think if you looked at the fundamentals, you could probably, I think you made quite a good case that, you know, they they could be doing, they they could be doing more of it because they've got, you know, the university, so many things. So I think probably like maybe maybe a better way is to look at specific cases rather than the, yeah, the sweeping outside the Southeast thing. And there's also a really good question about what to do with like the the kind of bottom 10, as Lauren Beck showed, were really low R and D. And, you know, maybe that is completely, you know, to be expected and 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 okay. But there's a positive question of what do we do then, you know, to to sort of help these areas benefit from R and D? Yes, good point.
As I understand, you have information on the first. So like exporting could be could be of interest. Of course, I have my selfish reasons because I'm teaching international trade. So it's be nice to link the two to each other, but that's, yeah.
Yeah, so what's my data source for the exports?
Balance sheet should.
Yeah, because because I because I agree that that we do, I always want to get to the outcomes and the outputs. So I agree that it would be great to layer on some of that stuff on the map. I mean, what wants some things that we could definitely add to the map are like from from intellectual property office, we could put patents up there and and, you know, maybe like spin offs and things like this. But I'm I'm slightly wary that I don't want people to to then look at that sometimes when it's like a narrow group of the out the outcomes that we're looking for. But yeah, there there is actually another project I didn't mention, which Chris Dimas, an academic who's with us on fellowship, is looking at the productivity, trying to to prove whether clusters have kind of increased productivity. So I think I mentioned earlier that we don't know about reverse causality sometimes between the, you know, the the clusters being more productive. So he is looking at that and I, yeah, I'll I'll speak to him about the exports. I don't know what his plans are on on trying to get export data.
I think it's something that you can get out of the balance sheets and give a, that's another argument that contributes to exports.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that would be good. I think really this is quite descriptive of like where are the clusters? And yeah, we did get a bit of how much, you know, money they're getting from VCs and from government. But yeah, it would be good to get more, what are they, what are they doing, what are the outputs and outcomes? Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much. Lovely. Thank you. Yeah, sorry, my bad that I did it in PhD in PDF. So yeah, hi, everyone. So I'm going to present a project funded by the British Academy that I'm developing together with with Beckner Unit at the ONS Sarben Economic Indicator Division. So basically, what we are trying to do is really to try to identify so-called hidden innovators by linking together several administrative and big data sets to identify basically business innovation and R and D activities, even if they're not usually captured by traditional metrics. So what is really the main objective of the project is to develop a new comprehensive measure of business R and D and innovation activities. And capturing exactly those so-called hidden innovators that are not considered usually in 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 many surveys and R and D statistics. Why that happens and what type of different type of businesses are we looking for? So we are trying to look at a different type of innovative activities beyond the traditional R and D investment metrics used and or patents. And secondly, as well, we try to look and focus on a different segment of the business population. So trying for instance, to focus a little bit more on SMEs, firms in low tech industries or as well businesses in peripheral and rural areas that are sometimes underrepresented. How do we do that? The idea is to gather and link together administrative and new alternative data sources to create a new, more comprehensive micro level, micro level database about R and D and business R and D and innovation activities. And we hope that this could exactly provide some insight about the distribution and the specialization of business innovative activities both across industries and regions. So I'll try very quickly to move these things somewhere else. So what will be the contribution at the end of this project? Basically, first of all, we try to map all the different data sources available to try to do this exercise. Understanding what are the variables, capturing all the different databases are comparable and can be used together. Trying to understand as well the comparability about all the different, all of the different informations we we can gather from these data sets about business innovative activities. So the idea is to then create this new comprehensive database about business innovation or in the activity for the UK. But of course, the methodological approach could be used as well as a blueprint to replicate basically the same exercise in different countries, in particular in other developed city countries, for instance. And then, of course, a contribution as well is to try to shed a light on the innovative activity of an eclectic segments of business population, in particular about SMEs and low tech businesses. This, of course, will strengthen the data analytical capacity, both in academia, but as well in policy in policymaking. And it is very much in line with the effort that Lauren Beck discussed before about transforming R and D and innovation statistics that the ONS and other statistical offices are carrying on. Hopefully, it could help as well national statistics to improve, for instance, the sampling strategy and making it more efficient in order to lower costs, for instance, for future R and D and innovation surveys. As they could use this data to basically identify potential businesses that might be doing R and D. And of course, the idea is as well to try to encourage cooperation between statistical offices and several government departments, enabling as well, hopefully, future data sharing. Even that exactly all the data sets we're going to use are already there, are already available to the different government departments and agencies. They simply most of the times do not communicate with each other. Okay, so basically what we are saying is when we don't want to increase costs, we simply want to make use of what is there already. So theoretically, this project started from the realization that there are limitations of the current official metrics, as Laura and Beck summarized before. And this is mainly coming from from two different shortcomings. The first one is a measurement shortcoming. With, in fact, actually, this is mostly driven by the fact that there has been for a long time, a very narrow focus on very few innovation metrics. Most of the time simply out of what was available out there. Okay, so for instance, there is a focus in most R and D statistics about R and D investments, following the Froscatti definitions, for instance, on patents as well. Simply because those are informations which are more easily accessible, basically. Secondly, there is another shortcoming in terms of the scope of traditional metrics on R and D innovation statistics. Sometimes they are relying on surveys, of course, because it's too expensive to 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 ask every single business whether they're doing R and D and innovation activities. And this could, of course, bring all the different caveats about surveys related to exactly, for instance, some of you as well suggested from the audience about headquarters bias. And as well, having been able only to provide information and statistic at the aggregate level because of the limited number of observations included in those surveys. And this, of course, will bring to exactly hiding very heterogeneous information, which on the aggregate level could not be detected. So I'll skip the the theoretical part just to 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 give a little bit more information about what we are trying to do. So in order to try to address those two shortcomings, in this project, we try to link longitudinal micro level data on a broad range. longitudinal micro level data on a broad range of different metrics about business R and D innovation activities in the UK. So first of all, we had to start from, okay, which type of R and D and business and innovative activities we want to, to identify, okay? Ideally, in an ideal world in which we have all the data available, what type of things we would like to, to capture and to measure, right? So we started thinking about, for instance, things like, of course, R and D investment in innovation output. But as well, we could think about, for instance, the support that businesses receive from public governments, public agencies and so on, to, to carry out innovative activities such as R and D tax credit or R and D innovation grants. But of course, then we would like to think about less blue sky type of activities. So in particular, for those businesses who are not doing R and D investment per se, but they might still be involved in innovative activities by, for instance, adopting new technologies, by doing incremental innovation and so on and so forth. And so thinking, for instance, about technological adoption and diffusion done by businesses. We would like to look as well at innovation output, in particular, innovation output which has, which is linked to intellectual property rights. And maybe exactly in this case, going beyond patents and look as well for instance, at trademarks and designs that instead are used by, by, by businesses. And exactly, there might be other innovative activities which are not listed here and we can, and we have to think about, okay, how can we measure alternative, in an alternative way, the innovation of businesses? So once we have this in mind, we have to think, okay, now let's go back from the, from, from the ideal world, let's go back to the real world, okay? And what data is available about that? Okay? What can we use in order to proxy or to measure that? So we started thinking about the possible sources of micro level data that are available in the UK in order to identify the different R and D and innovative activities of businesses. And the other thing is, okay, let's try not to have just a snapshot, but let's try to see whether we can build a longitude in our data about the R and D, R and D innovative activities of businesses. So we started by exactly going to the, 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 the data that is already available and provided by the O N S, for instance, on the R and D investment innovation output. So looking at the O N S official statistics, so BERT, for instance, as we discussed before. While there is another data set done by D B T on the UK Innovation Survey, which was the correspondent of the European Community Innovation Survey. And there are some information as well coming from, from firms' balance sheet, as one of the previous intervention pointed out, from the B S D and A B S, so basically the balance sheet data of businesses in the UK. Then we started thinking about the innovation support, so the, the public support received by businesses to do innovation and R and D. And so luckily in the UK, the government is providing generous R and D tax credit, and this is provided by H M S C. But as well, the R and D innovation grants that Tyler discussed before. And, and this is coming not just from U K R I and Innovate UK at the national level, but it could be coming from international agencies such as the U O R I S on twenty twenty framework, but also from regional level, local level. And in fact, especially the Devolved Nations, Scotland, Wales, Northern Ireland are providing their own R and D support to their businesses. And it would be useful to look at that. There are other sources like John discussed, for instance, exactly different government departments providing their own funding, DEFRA, N H S, the Minister of Defence, and our First Sector Organisation, foundations and so on, providing as well grants such as the British Academy supporting this project, a levy home welcome and so on and so forth. Then, as I said, we would like to look at technological diffusion adoption ideally, right? The best thing we could do in this case is to look at specific initiatives done in the UK in order to try to promote, for instance, technological adoption and diffusion among businesses. And at the national level, we identified that as the support provided by the Catapult Network, which is a network of innovation hubs, helping businesses to, to basically doing technological adoption and diffusion. But as well at the regional level, I found out that Scotland is doing something similar with an agency called Interface. And then we look at the international property, intellectual property rights in terms of the IPO patents, design and trademarks, which of course the Intellectual Property Office in the UK registers. In terms of other innovative activities, there are multiple sources of alternative data that can be used nowadays in order to try to identify R and D and innovation, and innovation done by businesses. Think about, for instance, GitHub collaborations or, for instance, other sources of information. And in this case, we, we tried to look, for instance, at web scrape data about what the businesses self-report they are doing on their websites. And this is provided by the Data City private company, as John introduced before, which they develop an innovation index basically to try to identify how intensive in our, in innovation businesses are. So we try to understand whether all these different metrics are comparable or not across each other, following the Froscati and the Oslo Manual definitions. And as you can see, most of them are, we are a little bit less sure about the Data City data, simply because exactly it's a little bit of a black box to understand how the innovation index is developed there. And so what we do then is we started collecting all the data, which has been a very painful, very long process of around eight months, which has not been, which is not over yet. And we try to basically collect and gather all the different data sources that I've, I've, I've listed, except for now for the U R I S on twenty twenty, for which data is available, but we are not considering for now. And the governmental and first sector data, which exactly, it would be quite sensitive to get information, for instance, from M O D. And, and the first sector that most of the times is going to find mostly academic, academic projects rather than private business projects. So I spur you this. So what we are currently doing is to look, to, to link all this data together and, and try to start the analysis to try to compare how using this new, more comprehensive data set, linked data set compares in respect to, for instance, to the, to the previous traditional metrics, okay? This has not been done yet, simply because, as I said, unfortunately, we're still in the process of linking everything together. But I started doing some very preliminary analysis based on some of the data that I had already previously and which I've already started to link together. So just to give you an indication, if we compare, for instance, BERT, which is the domain R and D innovation statistic by the O N S with the businesses that are included in some of the other data sources that I listed, in particular, the UK Innovation Survey, the data coming from R and D grants, the data coming from the Patent Office, and the data coming from the Catapult network, you can see that exactly in some cases, a very small proportion of businesses, for instance, included in the Catapult networks, so in innovation, technological and diffusion, are as well included in the BERT statistics, okay? So it looks like there might be quite a, a big potential to use this data in order to identify businesses which have not been identified before. To give an idea, how businesses in the official statistics compare in terms of their characteristics with businesses that we can capture with other data, administrative data sources. So on average, those in the, in the official statistics are larger, they are less likely to be single plant, they are more likely to be manufacturing, and in particular, high tech manufacturing, and are much more likely to be located in urban areas rather than rural areas, okay? So there is a potential to use alternative data sources and alternative administrative data sources to have a better picture of the business and innovation, business R and D innovation activity. So yeah, I have some cool maps, but I don't have time to go through it. So basically, stay tuned, in the sense that we finally can start the data linking now and do the analysis. We will try to build as well an open source online dashboard, trying to exactly provide a better picture of the distribution of R and D innovation activities, both across regions and industries in the UK. And we will draft as well a methodological note on how can we do, can we follow a very similar approach in order to do similar analysis and similar data linking, not just in the UK, but as well elsewhere. So thank you very much. So I'm conscious of time and we have around ten minutes left. So of course, I, I would like to open the floor for questions about all speakers, not just myself. So if you have any questions, not just about this last presentation, please raise your hand.
Hi, Nico. Thank you. I'll start with a question for you. From the descriptors that you showed, it seems like a lot of the firms that you capture with the other data sets, which are not included in BERT, seem to be ones that are in high tech manufacturing or that have average number of employees on the higher end of the, so it's, could you, could you probably explain the matching process that you do? Because it seems a bit strange that BERT would not capture firms that have large number of employees or are in high tech manufacturing, which do large R and D activities, large scale.
Yeah, so I had to go very quickly through that. But basically, although it looks like exactly the mean, the average employment is larger, this is driven by very few outliers. And in fact, if you look at the median distribution of employment, it's smaller. So this is, again, this is just a partial thing because I just did, did it with the data that I had available before. And they are usually less intense in high tech manufacturing services. Although exactly, as you pointed out, they are a little bit, they are more likely, slightly more likely to be knowledge intensive services. And this is quite normal because again, traditional metrics look very much at R and D investment. And R and D investments are that much more focused in manufacturing industries rather than services industries. So it might be that exactly previous statistics were a bit more skewed towards manufacturing rather than services. When instead we start looking at, for instance, other stuff that says technological adoption or incremental innovation services might appear a little bit more.
Thank you. So about technology adoption, I think it's, it's really important and it would be really great to integrate it as much as possible to all these statistics. But basically, so what you use is a very special type of technology adoption. It is subsidized in some way, and I guess these are very advanced technologies. And maybe not the main type of adoption or upgrading many of the low productivity firms are doing. I think you could, of, of course, there are many data sets already, but you could think about looking at, so I think there are two, two types of data sources that you didn't mention. One is about technology use. So there are surveys, which, for example, I'm working with an I C T survey, which, which has like decent coverage for larger countries. It, I think it's, it's conducted in all European countries. And then, and then it asks about what specific I C Ts you are using, right? So, so that you can see who uses what and probably what was introduced in, in, in the last couple of years. And I think there are other surveys, like probably robot use or something like that. So you could take a look at, I think, this kind of service and this, this provide probably a, a, a good picture of kind of low key technology adoption. Another thing you may consider looking at is import data, because if you are importing a robot, whatnot, then you, you will adopt that and, and that should be available for many firms, though it can be indirectly imported. And but that's, that, that's another data source which, which may make sense. Well, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Just I will come back to the scope of, of R and D. Maybe direct question, in which extent we can say that the, the daily business of statistic office in the country and other research, research centre in the country as well to be fully part of R and D? Is clear? So what's the expenditure, what's going in, for example, in statistic centre? The definition said in R and D methodology is, we cannot take it all other R and D, maybe partially with that. But in our, in myself, I can say everything we do it in the statistic centre, it's just for to support the development, also to research. So in which extent we can say all the expenditure in that centre, on statistic centre, I mean, to be fully part of R and D?
I mean, I know that, so I think you're talking about our own, our own work in, in analyzing, doing research at this level, is it already? In, in the Department for Science, Innovation and Technology, yeah, we largely do count the, you know, the research that we do as, as R and D spending. But I suppose it goes back to the Froscati definition of being novel and I probably can't say by heart all the, all the requirements, but it is quite a strict definition. But yeah, I think in general, a lot of our, our work would be classed as R and D.
Just, just to add, all of our externally commissioned research, so like the development of a clusters pool, that's classified as, as R and D spending. But when we do it internally ourselves, it then doesn't get counted as R and D spending. Which is a peculiarity, but it'd be hard to divide our time between what is research and what isn't.
I think it does raise a really important question about, you know, in terms of the policy objective sometimes being economic outcomes. Obviously, it's not just the Froscati R and D that is really important, and obviously that's why, and Rico is looking wider as well. So we do want to get a better understanding of the slightly beyond the Froscati definition.
Thank you. I think this is all very excellent work. As an applied economist, you know, I, I obviously am one of the users of this data potentially. And what I'm always looking for is good linkages with sort of performance data, you know, company revenues, this sort of stuff, maybe region level stuff. So, so I mean, I, I hope you, you plan to make these things, you know, to have connections to these sort of data sets. Thank you.
Yes, I love to. That would be the plan. The good thing is that I think, for instance, with, with the access that I'm trying to do is to show that indeed it is possible to link all these different data sets together. And, and without too much pain, in the sense that most of these statistics are provided with identifiers for firms, for, at least for companies. And so not for other organisations, but at least for companies. And, and then exactly, it could be linked with all the other O N S data, for instance, or the data provided by H M S C. So it's not a technical challenge, it's more, sometimes at least I found in the, in the, what I've tried to do, it's a legal challenge. So, and, and trying exactly to bring together all the different factors together.
This question's for John. So you showed the, the map showing the distribution of U K R I funding compared to the clusters. It strikes me that there's a chicken and egg sort of situation there, where you don't necessarily know that the distribution of the clusters is being caused by the funding or whether the funding's going to those areas because that's where there are firms with the capability to perform the R and D. Whereas if you want to kind of influence that in the policy sense, you need to unpick that causality. How, how, how are you planning to do that?
Yeah, definitely a really good question, kind of like the critical question, I think, in terms of the, you know, the U K R I regional question. So my opinion, based on all of the evidence, is that we need to look more about how we build the capability to do R and D. So for, for some regions, I think, you know, obviously, we can't just give them some R and D grants and then off you go. It's like the, what's the, there's a, there's a really good paper about the Capability Escalator, it's called, to the, for R and D. And it's kind of the, the management skills, the STEM skills, the knowledge exchange universities, and then eventually the firm does their own R and D. So I think, I think really it's about, yeah, policies, not just from U K R I, but wider government, to build the, the capability to then do more R and D spend. Totally agree with you that, you know, that, that map is not like saying like, you know, all is well, everything's, you know, we should stay as we are. And it was also quite, like I say, it's quite a high level picture and mainly it's around cities. But yes, I don't think that we know in terms of the causality sometimes where a really successful cluster, you know, there's lots of factors that, that led to that. I mean, there's usually a, a, a top university in the, in the top clusters. And there's, it's usually a city and there's lots of, it's appealing for highly talented or highly skilled people to live there. So I think there's a big sort of leveling up department angle about, you know, how do we get, how do we create cluster, or how do we facilitate clusters? Because I'm not sure you can create them from scratch. And so I think it's really, it's part of the problem with this area is And so I think it's really, it's part of the problem with this area is that we're trying to increase. R and D and innovation in places, but the policies are kind of like across the whole of government. And you can't really just do it, certainly not from U K R I, because they are, you know, funding body. So yeah, I think, as you, as you know, from our work together, it's just hard joining all, up all of the departments to get on that problem.
I'm going to be cheeky and go with two, but I'm going to begin with you, Enrique. So. The results that you've put up here are for 2015, so I'm just sort of curious whether. I mean, clearly, at the beginning of the presentation, we were talking about there were being issues with the sample for Bird. Have you rerun the results for 22 and have the changes that O N S have made led to an improved picture on your metrics? And then just before you answer, let me come to to Laura and to Beck. So. I think, I think it's really interesting, the the kind of magnitude of the change that you're seeing on this, on this survey. And the story you told was about sample recruitment being a big part of the problem that you had. That the A B S that was telling you whether or not firms were doing R and D, that you were then going to sample, that that was telling you. Or was giving you a a kind of incorrect sample. Is that because businesses were telling you, no, we don't do any R and D, where now you think they do? Or was it to do with the waiting that happened subsequently when you got those results back in? What, can you unbox this a little bit? What's, what's driving that change? Is it because you've got different firms in the sample or because they're telling you something different?
Yeah, thanks, Phil. Great question. Yeah, so I I'd probably say a bit of both. So because we use those feeder surveys such as A B S, the sample, the sampling frame is designed to meet the needs of A B S. When we first designed that sample, it worked really well. Fifteen, twenty years ago, R and D was only done by large businesses that captured the main outcome of the A B S. So that worked really well. The problem is as R and D changes and as the policies and tax credits came into play. Smaller firms taking it up, less likely to be sampled to A B S and therefore be part of our feeder. The uplift method Laura talked about was that interim step before we completely changed our sample. Looked to address the waiting issue there, so we also didn't have the waiting challenge. So that's why the uplift looked really good and actually brought us quite similar to our new completely transformed bird for this year. The uplift got us much closer to what we expected, but as Laura showed, there were still some differences from the sample. Due to the fact that we were probably excluding businesses that are really important to capture. Okay, Enrique, want this part?
Yeah, I'll link exactly perfectly to what Beck just said. So the short answer is yes, that's the plan. So the data will go back 10 years' time, more or less. And we'll have data until, for sure, until 2022 for all the data sources, for some of them up to 2023. And the idea is to exactly to compare them, first of all, with uplifting and secondly, exactly with the new version of Bird, which has just been released. To see whether exactly the the new sampling strategy and the increase in the sample size actually managed to 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 close that gap. So yeah. So we are already, I think, a few minutes late, so I don't want to 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 keep you here for longer. Thank you very much to all the speakers, first of all, to the audience for all the wonderful questions. And of course, if you have more questions, would like to know more about our projects, please feel free to to stop us and let's have a chat over coffee. Okay? Thank you very much.